Can the road roll call please?
Tranzilla, Teweson.
I can agree with you.
Do you think that went back, sorry?
You just listened to what I said, just my brain is, my arm is, my shoulder's broken, so my brain is, um, recognition cell, would you like to?
Yes, I was just trying, if you go to Danbury website, have you been to their website? There's a great interview on there, you're gonna see some live folks tonight, but our CPAP program did some wonderful things, developing, well, I'll have them talk to you about, but they're up and coming, and we'll probably be seeing some of their copyright things that they'll be doing in the future, and they're really excited about the work that they're doing, and Jack Tracy, a teacher that sponsored, maybe, may want to come up, and explain a little bit about the program and introduce it, really?
I'm gonna do just that, but I'm gonna have them do it, because, you know, they're sort of...
That'd be great.
So, I'm just gonna give you a summary, I'd like them to explain what they had done, but, um, they, they entered into the Verizon App Challenge, and they came in, uh, the best state, for the state of Connecticut, uh, once, one of the great things about this, I'm not sure where you guys want us to stand, but one of the, the great things is, there was what, like fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred applicants, and so they came in the top fifty. Every one of them is very amazing, from tall to short. Um, Kim, Tommy, you wanna explain what that, what you guys did?
Sure, so, the Verizon App Challenge was basically, we, we were judged based on a concept for a smartphone app, so we weren't actually designing the app, but just the idea, and the idea we came up with was an app called MetaMinder, and the purpose of the app would be to be, to be used by patients, people who take medication, and they would be able to input their medication, all their different medications that they would use, and it would remind them at what time they would have to take doses. And also, refill, it had all, had all sorts of things to it, but pharmacy information, doctor information, it would serve as both a reminder system and a database of pharmaceutical information for customers.
They're gonna probably get rich from this, I don't think we're gonna see anything, but I think these, you know, they really...
Well deserved, too.
It's very well deserved, you know, one of the, it is, the app that, the app that they have is, it's a very standout app, um, one of the things that the App Challenge, um, presented to them was that they needed to come up with something that was like a real world problem, it had to be, um, it had to be STEM-based, um, like, and had to, what's, give some of the other criteria that you guys had for that?
Right, um, so, we got all sorts of judging criteria, for the submission process, we had to submit an essay that summarized basically what I told you, what the app does, and also a video, um, visual representation of the app's functionality, and basically us talking about it, and that, those two things, the essay and the video, were judged on all these criteria, including STEM principles, like science, technology, engineering math, and how we use them, um, how we applied, like, the scientific method and inquiry in our research and coming up with the concept, and also just how functional our app would be, like, realistically, um, how useful it would be to a lot of different people, and that sort of thing.
Yeah, one other thing that's, that's notable is that they had to do research to make sure that there's nothing else out there, you know, so is this something that's marketable, and if there is something else that's out there, what's wrong with that, and how, what, what they're gonna do to fix it, and I think you guys found, what, there are two different types of apps out there?
More than that, yeah.
They're more than that, but they're, they're way inferior comparison to what other guys are doing. So, anyway, so we, we have, I wonder, do we, we have some certificates that they, that they got, and there's also a plaque that they, that they awarded, I'm gonna try to make sure there's a place at the high school they can put that, um, but we wanted to, um, award each of these placades to you guys, so, um, I'm gonna, um, call each of you guys up, Tommy? This is a certificate for award, um, in, for excellence in mobile app concept design. They also got letters from senators, most of them did. Lexi?
I don't know where it is, but, um, it's coming.
It's in the mail. Lexi?
One of the things on the show we talked about was how, how did you find out about the club, and how we can talk to others about getting into the club, and, uh, because you all had such a great experience, we certainly wanna get others to have other students participate. How many of you were in the STEM Academy? You don't have, that's the point, that was the point, they didn't need to be, so reaching out to anyone that was interested, you became connected into it, right? Why don't you just go through, tell me what year in school you're in, and what you're thinking about next year, if you have plans, go ahead.
Well, I'm a junior.
So, you're gonna be up at the high school next year?
Yeah, I'll still be at the high school next, I'll be a senior next year.
I'm a sophomore, and I will obviously be a junior next year.
I'm a junior.
I'm a junior, gonna be a senior.
I'm a junior.
I was just, was just asked, sometimes you wanna leave some stuff out, one of the things that Dr. Sal just kinda said was, um, these guys are also, uh, TV stars, because Dr. Sal went two week, week or two ago, had them on his, um, TV show, talking about CPAP stuff, actually, just a few of them, just two of them were on it, um, so, the, he asked our CPAP program students to come in and talk about it, so, what is CPAP? CPAP is the Connecticut Pre-Engineering Program, um, and I'm brand new to it, so I only know just a little bit, Ms. Kimball's the CPAP expert, so do you wanna tell them what CPAP is?
It's kind of, uh, been changing, it's at the high school at Broadview, uh, at the middle schools, we have Broadview, and it comes up into the high school, and over the past years, it's, um, been more of a, like, a, a hands-on engineering program, where they solved different problems, like last year we did a RuBober project, but this was brought up to us to do the App Challenge, and we really thought that it was a good way to go, technology, this is where the world is coming, so we kinda shifted gears into this App Challenge, and we have, so we have about four, uh, thirty-two students now, thirty-two to thirty-eight?
Just under forty.
Just under forty, forty students that are doing it, um, because it was all new to us with this App Challenge, we had this one very ambitious group that tried, decided to try the, uh, the Horizon Challenge, so hopefully next year, if we follow through with the same app program, we'll have more groups applying to this, uh, Horizon App Challenge, but since it was such a new program, and just kinda wanted to get our feet wet, but everyone, um, but all the kids are developing their own groups.
You know, they did it all on their own.
And it's really amazing to just watch their process, just like, just listening to this group and the other groups, like, to determine what their app was gonna be, and their, uh, their process of deciding on what to include and not to include, and their research, they really put, well beyond the two hours a week that we meet on Fridays, um, all the groups have put in well more time on this, their project, so they're very motivated.
Now, which company was it that sponsored it?
Verizon.
Verizon, the question I asked on the show, and someone just asked me, who's gonna have the copyrights to it, or who's gonna have the patents?
These students own, they own everything that they've done, as a group, they own everything that they've done, the information they submitted to Verizon, is, you know, there's, it's basically, it's sort of a contract, which says what each side has, and, you know, it's, everything that they submitted belongs to them, you know, nobody's gonna take their stuff.
When I talked to them that day, I was just impressed with their stick-to-it-ness, they just stayed on it, kept going down a road, just kept experimenting, working together, really impressed me.
Yeah, we were, we were very impressed, too.
Unbelievable, now, just know, that was a media special, which means you'll have to pay for it, I mean, copyright.
My parents here? Did you all stand? Thank you very much. Thank you for playing, I appreciate you.
And just one last thing, if you're interested in learning a little bit more about that, you can go to the Verizon App Challenge online and look it up, but also, Mr. Sterling Miller filmed this show, and he posted it on the, or someone posted it on the website a couple of days ago, so you can see the TV show on the website if you're interested in checking that out, I don't know if you guys knew that was up yet or not, but...
So, now, right, are you gonna be working from the concept, are you going to be...
Yeah, we're currently, we're currently developing it already, we're working on developing it, through the program, we have, uh... And there's a possibility, there's a possibility for some of the groups that are working, not just these guys, but the other, other teams that are working, to possibly have a summer internship to keep on developing their app, so, um, that's an op, we're just, we're trying to work that, those details out now, there's a possibility in that, and also, the program they're using is based from MIT, so it's a, MIT has this apps program out there, so anybody that's interested could actually go to, it's a free site, you can go and you can develop your own apps, too, if you like, they have tutorials that tell you how to do it.
Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you for coming. You could lay your hand.
If you can't see me, I can't see you, so make sure.
Not quite yet, um, I think I'll just look like I am, so I might say...
Do you know, was this, was this initiated by you?
No, his staff led it.
Okay.
Like I said, these, we didn't do anything, you know, and they, you know, the old saying, uh, teachers, uh, we should...
It's pretty long, since you never...
Okay.
It's time for public participation, um, we have a sheet out, and people wrote down their names, however they're part of our, our presentation, so I'm gonna move quickly, if there's, like, the board welcomes public participation, and asks us speakers, please limit your comments to three minutes, speakers may offer objective comments on school operations and programs that concern them, the board will not permit any expression of personal comments, feelings, or inflammatory comments about board education personnel and their students, or against any person commanded with the Danbury Public School System. Um, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak. Girls, one, two, three, four. Mayor Eric Quest is here, so he'll be speaking at, uh, earlier, alrighty.
I'm chairman, forward to move on, uh, just for your information, uh, the public, um, the public, the community, public community, uh, group, uh, that Mr. Janelle chairs, is it?
Yes, community relations.
Community relations, one of the suggestions was to have a live stream here?
Yes.
Sterling, stand up, all the good stuff you've been saying, going on...
It's just a gentleman's...
So, I just wanted to know, instead of you guys were thinking, might as well do it, I'll be there, so, he's here, live streaming, so...
That was Andrew, he told us, he tried to find out how to do stuff.
I don't ask him that.
Very good, thank you, and I look forward to hearing you, um, personally, for your wonderful things with Eric, thank you very much for all the work you're doing. Alrighty, consent calendar, clear?
That the Board of Education approved the items on the consent calendar as recommended fourteen dash forty-one through fourteen dash forty-six.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, okay, here we go, is there, oh, you know what I never asked, is there an employee representative? Okay, leave it on the screen, guys, just, student representatives, yes, we have a student representative, no? No, we don't, okay. Um, presentation for the Promise for Children Partnership, I believe, Mayor, that's, uh, you, or Caroline, I'm sorry?
I'm Caroline LaFleur, I'm the Director of Danbury's Promise for Children Partnership, um, we're the Danbury's Early Childhood Collaborative, um, and I'm joined here this evening by Julene Flanagan, um, who's the Director of Early Childhood Services for Education Connection, Eileen Costello, who's our School Readiness Coordinator, Linda Costco with Danbury Children First, Jean Erica, who's doing some work with us, and Ann Mead, obviously, who is early childhood of Danbury Public Schools, and they're all part of our partnership, and our promise is that all Danbury children ages birth through eight are healthy and ready for school and lifelong learning. Um, we are one of fifty-two early childhood collaboratives in the state of Connecticut, um, that are sponsored by the William Casper Grousting Memorial Fund, um, and in Danbury, we're spearheaded by the City of Danbury, which just opened an office of early childhood, which you may have seen in the paper, and we're designated to run that office of early childhood, our other partners are Danbury Children First, obviously, the Danbury Public Schools, the Danbury School Readiness Council, Education Connection, Parents, United Way of Western Connecticut, and we have a number of other partners who participate on our teams, um, because when you're working with young children, um, kind of everybody in the community has to work together, um, and our primary purpose is to prepare children for success in the Danbury Public Schools, so everything that we do is about getting children ready to get to the schools and be prepared to learn, and whether that means academically, socially, emotionally, what we're trying to do is make sure that all children in Danbury have a foundation, a solid foundation, so that when they get to you, when they get to kindergarten, they're prepared to learn. Um, our guiding principles are that learning begins at birth, and there's more and more scientific evidence, I'm sure that, um, you've been reading about and hearing about, it's actually becoming, you know, a political issue now, Bill de Blasio is actually running on early childhood, so, you know, learning begins at birth, this is, um, we're finding out more and more that this is true, that a parent is a child's first and most important teacher, so, parents who provide, uh, rich learning environments at home are gonna have children who are ready to come to the Danbury Public Schools, ready to learn, quality preschool provides a foundation for success, so, um, you want quality early learning experiences between the ages of three and five, but really beginning from birth, um, and a child's ability to succeed in school may largely be determined before age five, so they're finding out more and more that by age five, you know, eighty percent of a child's brain is developed by, I think they're saying age three now, but age five, there are certain factors that can contribute to a child's life that can really make it difficult for them to succeed in school, so, um, it seems kind of a discouraging thing, that a child's future may be determined by age five, but unfortunately, they're finding out more and more that that's the case, so, um, what are we doing as a partnership? Well, a big part of what we're trying to do is get resources to support young children in Danbury, and we're getting resources from private foundations, uh, from the state government, and from businesses, so, um, we've gotten a lot of momentum in the past few years, um, and to date, we've brought in more than five hundred thousand dollars of resources to support early learning in Danbury, so we're very, um, happy about that, um, in the past year, we received two hundred thousand dollars to provide home visitation programs that help prepare at-risk students to succeed in school, so when you have families that are, uh, are at risk, where, you know, the home environment for the child may not be as conducive to learning as we would like, uh, we have now been able to bring in two hundred thousand dollars, which, unfortunately, two hundred thousand dollars only serves about thirty at-risk kids, but it's a lot more than we were able to do in the past, so, that's through home visitation, where, where, um, people are actually going into the home and helping the parents connect with resources, um, showing them how they can get early, quality early learning experiences for their children, um, get them health services, get them all the foundational things that they need, um, to, to be prepared to succeed in kindergarten. Uh, we also were able to obtain from a private foundation over ninety thousand dollars in funding for preschool teacher training, uh, to improve the quality of learning, early learning programs, um, in Danbury, so that the teachers are equipped with the skills they need in preschool to really provide those foundational skills, uh, for young children, and we got some infrastructure money, um, over twenty thousand dollars, um, and we're using a lot of that money just to do outreach to parents, uh, we, you know, we do outreach at events, we do outreach through Facebook, we have almost three hundred likes on Facebook, where the parents who like us on Facebook get information about early learning and the importance of reading, talking, and singing with your children at home, um, that type of thing, so, um, we're using a lot of that money just to, just to reach parents, so that they, you know, can support their children's learning. We also gave nine thousand dollars of, of some of the money that we garnered to, back to the Danbury Public Schools, to collect data on DRA scores, um, both in the aggregate and by elementary school, we, we also divided it up by grade, um, we got some longitudinal data on, uh, DRA scores of school readiness students, so students have gone through quality school readiness programs versus students who did not, um, to, to see whether what we're doing is making a difference, uh, we got some information on chronic absenteeism, um, they're finding out more and more that, uh, students who are chronically absent are much less likely to succeed in school, and that means students who are missing ten percent of the school year, so that's eighteen days a year, so, it's a little over, more than one day a month, um, your, your child is at risk, so, um, we were able to obtain some data on that, um, body mass index, can consume or unhealthy, can't learn, um, and we had not been able to get body mass index, and there were public school students for a while for capacity issues, so, we were happy to get that information, and then, um, we also compiled some data, um, about how, how mental behavioral health services are being used, um, through the schools, and how the schools are accessing services in the community for mental behavioral health.
Caroline, she's ready to move on, we have some new report members, DRA stands for Developmental Reading Assessment, and it's, it's an assessment that's given at the, uh, really grade levels in school, kindergarten up to three.
And this is the type of data that the foundations that we're working with are really interested in, um, they really want to see data on child outcomes, um, so next year, uh, we're working with foundations, and we plan to apply for, uh, significant funding to increase summer learning programs, because, um, they're also finding that children lose a lot of learning over the summer, um, especially low-income children who don't have access to quality programming in the summer, uh, tend to fall backwards over the summer, so we're hoping to work with foundations to get some more money to supplement the Danbury Public School's summer learning programs and after-school programs, to supplement family literacy programs, like Lea Saras and Read and Rise that we're doing in the schools, that help families create more literacy-rich home environments, um, and also, um, working always to bring more school readiness slots, um, to, to the Danbury community, so that we'll have, you know, more of our low-income children will be arriving to school with quality early learning experience, so, we get down to the, to the nitty-gritty, so, why are we here tonight? So, uh, we need a cash match from the Danbury Public Schools, um, I don't know, Jean, if you wanna come and pitch in, but, um, last year we received thirty-five thousand dollars from the Danbury Public Schools, so that made us an option-one community in Grousting's, you know, one of these foundations' eyes, um, being an option-one community caught the attention of the other foundations, um, that along with some of the other work that we're doing, we're a part of the campaign for grade level reading, um, they said, okay, this is a community that has their act together in early childhood, we wanna work with them, and, um, so we were able to, because of that match and the demonstrated commitment that the schools are committed to working on early childhood, uh, with our partnership, enabled us to bring in that foundation money, it really was a significant factor, um, these private foundations, um, they want buy-in from the schools, they wanna see that the schools are committed, uh, to the partnership in the form of, you know, some cash involvement in the work that we do, and, um, we have been working in partnership with the schools very well, with Ann and others, um, and creating linkages between early education and kindergarten through grade three, and they're also very, very data-focused, a lot of these foundations, um, they made their money in the business world, and so, um, they wanna see data on, is what you're doing working, um, so, you know, we, that's why we help, you know, we, we gave my, some money back to the schools to collect some data on childhood outcomes, so, um, Jean, did you wanna...
Sure, just to, uh, elaborate upon what Caroline had said, it's nice to certainly be here, it's been a while since, uh, I've been in this room before the port of head, um, but it's, uh, good to see all of you as honorable members and, and chair, uh, my job's the easy one, is to ask for money, right, so, uh, the, the important part of that, though, is, as, as Caroline had indicated, is, many of our, uh, grantors, or those who we seek to receive grant dollars from, uh, from the foundation and, and public sector in particular, are looking for the strong commitment from the city and the schools, and clearly, our mayor, our superintendent, um, are both strongly committed, uh, to this particular endeavor, uh, they are both key among, uh, the leaders from within various aspects, representing various aspects of our community, who will serve on, uh, the Promise's, uh, Executive Advisory Board, uh, and provide guidance and leadership, um, for the organization as it goes forward in attaining its goal, of ideally ensuring that every child, um, has a preschool, uh, learning experience, uh, prior to, uh, the age, prior to them entering their formal school years, here within the Danbury Public Schools, why is that important? Um, because the Center on the Development, Developing Child, um, at Harvard University has found that for every one dollar invested in the development of, of an early, in the early development of a child's life, uh, from birth until they enter their formal school years in particular, we as a community reap nine dollars in return as a benefit, uh, through savings, uh, for example, um, as Caroline had indicated, those who have a successful preschool environment, who are engaged from the time of birth through the time that they enter their formal school years, um, are more apt, uh, to, uh, be ready to learn, uh, to succeed, to be able to read at the third grade level, equally with those who have had the preschool experience versus those who hadn't, uh, so, we wanna ensure that every child in Danbury has the opportunity to have a preschool, um, learning experience, that saves us as a community, um, because you will find that not only will absenteeism be down, as Caroline had noted, uh, through their school years, um, but children who have that preschool experience are likely to not require as much special education, so there's less demand on special educational needs, uh, they likely, as they grow older, will not require general assistance, that's what this study at Harvard has found, uh, they likely will be able to avoid, uh, involvement within the criminal justice system, I mean, that's the kind of investment... its goal of ideally ensuring that every child has a preschool learning experience prior to the age, prior to them entering their formal school years here within the Danbury Public Schools. Why is that important? Because the Center on the Developing Child at Harvard University has found that for every one dollar invested in the development of an early, in the early development of a child's life, from birth until they enter their formal school years in particular, we as a community reap nine dollars in return as a benefit through savings. For example, as Caroline had indicated, those who have a successful preschool environment, who are engaged from the time of birth through the time that they enter their formal school years, are more apt to be ready to learn, to succeed, to be able to read at the third grade level, equally with those who have had the preschool experience versus those who hadn't. So, we want to ensure that every child in Danbury has the opportunity to have a preschool learning experience. That saves us as a community because you will find that not only will absenteeism be down, as Caroline had noted, through their school years, but children who have that preschool experience are likely to not require as much special education. So, there's less demand on special educational needs. They likely, as they grow older, will not require general assistance. That's what this study at Harvard has found. They likely will be able to avoid involvement within the criminal justice system. I mean, that's the kind of investment that's made early that saves us in the long term and down the road. So, it's about providing every child within the city of Danbury that same equal footing, that same opportunity to compete and to learn, so that no child's advantaged over another, but that all have the opportunity to succeed as they enter their formal school years here within the Danbury Public Schools. So, what's important is to ensure that the city is committed, which they are, our leadership, providing their time and talent. And certainly, we need the city's resources, and we're working with the mayor to ensure that that happens. We need the resources from the Danbury Public Schools likewise to be able to demonstrate to those within the private and public sectors who are potential grantors that we have that kind of commitment, that level of commitment, not just in terms of the leadership of the individuals within the city and within the schools, but certainly the financial commitment as well. And that in terms helps us reap more dollars from the private sector as we make our asks and from other foundations and grant opportunities down the road. Now, I understand fully how this works, right? So, the city gives you money, they can't tell you where you're going to put it, right? You decide where each of those dollars are attributed within the, within the line items in the school budget. And certainly, the city can't give you dollars and tell you and designate it for a particular line item within that budget. Fully understand and appreciate that. However, working with the mayor and working with the superintendent, we are hoping that the city will provide dedicated dollars directly from the city of Danbury to the Promise for Children Partnership and in terms of $35,000 for the next school year. And likewise, we'll provide those dollars separate from your budgetary process that would flow through the Danbury Public Schools and in essence, present an opportunity for you to provide those dollars to the partnership in return, which again, strongly demonstrates the necessary commitment that we need to display and demonstrate for all of our other potential funders. That will ensure the success of the partnership in the long term, but it will ensure our success of being able to garner the kind of financial resources that are necessary to sustain this organization, its infrastructure, its programs, some of which you saw, and new ones, such as creating dollars for a scholarship fund, in essence, where parents who cannot afford today to send their child to a quality preschool experience will be able to tap those scholarship dollars, in essence, to be able to provide them the financial assistance to be able to do so. Again, our intent, ensuring every child within the city of Danbury has that preschool experience.
So, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question just from a recommendation. I'm thinking of Head Start, and this is something that supplements it, works to work with them, or?
They would be part of our partnership. So, really, the way we're structured is it's everybody who kind of touches the life of a young child in Danbury, we try to involve in our collaborative. So, Head Start is involved, the health clinics are involved, the early care and education providers are involved, because, you know, from zero to five, you kind of, well, you know, from zero to twenty-one, you need to look at the whole child, but especially from zero to three and zero to five, you need to look at the whole child. So, we have health providers, Head Start, early care and education providers, you know, everybody, you know, working together. Like I said, the parents are really key in the early, in the early years as being foundational for children's learning. It's important that the doctors know about the different services that are available for children regarding, you know, children's development. They need to understand, you know, how to do developmental screenings with children so that, you know, early intervention is so proven that if you catch something when a child is one or two, as Jean explained, then you can provide early intervention services, and that keeps you from having to provide special education services down the road. So, everybody, anybody who touches the life of a young child, we are trying to include in this collaborative.
Kathy, you have a question?
So, the difference between Head Start and you is that Head Start has a building that children go to. You primarily focus on the home?
Well, Head Start is, is a provider of early care and education services.
Yes, they have a building where children go.
Right.
You would focus on the home?
Well, we kind of look at the whole picture. So, we're, we're focusing on the parents, we're focusing on the
Example.
The early, kind of everybody. We try, as a collaborative, we're trying to bring everybody together, the doctors, the Head Start, the preschool providers, the parents, kind of everybody together to look at problems holistically and to get people talking about, on the same page. So, try to get the healthcare providers in the same room with the early care providers, in the same room with the parents, so that, you know, for example, we recently had a meeting where we brought together parents and healthcare providers and educators all to talk about children's early, you know, behavioral and mental health, because a lot of people in the community were talking about seeing a lot of behavioral health issues in very young children, a lot of behavioral issues. So, the doctors, you know, getting the doctors to understand what services are available in the community, as well as the preschool providers, as well as the parents, you know, so it's everybody in the community, like I said, who touches the life of a young child, not just, not just the educating, so Head Start would sort of fall under preschool and education, but there's also healthcare, there's also the parents.
Information, is that what you mean?
Yes, information and collaboration, and to get everybody talking to each other. I don't know if anybody wants to, Linda, if you want to.
Also, there's a strategic plan to go on the conversation website. Basically, it's a classroom, I would say, there's about twenty-five persons. But, so we developed a plan, and it's about time to update it again. So, we look from all the different sectors to see what we need to strengthen, you know, what might, we have a lot of great services in the community, but sometimes the doctor doesn't know what's provided over here, which is important to the family. So, we documented the assets in the community, and then we keep learning too, what are the best practices. Two years ago, children were proud to make this a national campaign for grade level reading and got more information. So, you know, one of the things, we try to fund different strategies in the plan, such as on education, is a higher priority. So, things are prioritized in the plan, and as we're going through, when we find funders that have the same interests as what we're at, what we're looking for, then we've been able to borrow resources and are continuing to be successful. So, and, you know, we revise it also, like we learned from the grade level reading, the reading campaign, more about the focus on absenteeism and some of the learning slide. So, now, you know, we're adjusting the plan to include those things. We're also learning as we go and share with cross-sector that touch on this.
I'm like the hospital, I'm the school readiness coordinator for the city of Danbury, and I know there's a lot of familiar faces and new ones here, but one of the things the collaboration has done is brought a lot of funding in. We mentioned Head Start, they're one of the subcommittees and a provider of school readiness, but just some of the kids, we have about forty children in Head Start, and the rest of the three hundred and sixty children are throughout the community. So, Promise for Children has really brought a lot of funding in for teacher development, and they've done a great job helping us, helping Head Start, and a lot of other providers in the community access funds. So, that's been the best part about our collaboration. So, some of the things that we've been able to do, I think I had this here last year, it was a draft version, but we've done kindergarten, Here I Come, and this goes out to all the children entering kindergarten. We do workshops for families on kindergarten, Here I Come. We've accessed money through another foundation. We have $90,000 worth of funding that was given to us to do some training in literacy, a cycle of intentional teaching, individualizing curriculum, and this is available to anyone in the community that works in early childhood. So, that's been great. We have twenty-five teachers taking advantage of that. We have another program that's on mental health and challenging behaviors that we collaborated with Danbury Public Schools, special ed teachers as well as early childhood teachers, and they went through three days of training through WeLock College, and we just finished that, and we're going to have another round of people going through that. All of that was possible because we collaborated with each other. Caroline has brought a lot of different people to the table. We now have a mental health task force with some doctors from the hospital that are meeting with Head Start people, school readiness people, people from Danbury Public Schools. United Way has given us some funds to do transition activities. So, we have some funds for each individual elementary school that we'll be giving out to the kindergarten teachers to run some type of activity at the school, as well as hosting different events in our early childhood programs. Trying to think of some of the other great things that we've had this year.
We did the Early Childhood Fair a few weeks ago, where we kind of, you know, let everybody who, you know, does something with young children come and talk about their programs, and all the preschools were there, and, you know, a lot of the parenting programs were there, so just get information. You know, when you have a, you know, a lot of people, if, when you have a child, before you get to school, a lot of times, you can be disconnected, you know? It's like, in those years from zero to five, really, you go to the doctor every once, you know, especially when your kids get older, I mean, even stop going to the doctor that often. So, you're just kind of, can be out there and a little disconnected, and, you know, we try to get parents connected with services, let people know what services are available to support them, you know, before five, because, you know, the better supported a child is up to the age of five, the more likely they are going to be ready to enter that kindergarten door and be successful, so.
Let's, I just wanted to throw one more thing in. One of the things that they funded for us for the past couple of years was a data study that we did with the school readiness children. We have about four hundred school readiness children per year, and we've been tracking them up to grade three now, and the Promise for Children Partnership has paid for that. We have, the data is input by a separate entity, and then it's, there's someone from Yale who's Dr. Olivera, who takes all the information and does all the work, and you can see on the back of the sheet that I just handed out to you, that we have about seventy to eighty percent of the children, depending on the criteria, at goal when they leave us on the state level to enter kindergarten, and that shows the closing of achievement gap. The red line is the low-income children, the blue line is the upper-income children, and it's a growth pattern over the time that they're with us. Obviously, children in two years do better than children in one year, but all this data that is helping us access these grants came through the Promise for Children Partnership funding, and they're the ones that allowed us to really grow our program and make a case for early childhood with these funders. So, on behalf of the School Readness Council, I'm supporting the Promise for Children Partnership because it really has, it's opened a lot of doors for us.
And I think, so this, you know, a lot, you know, so we do have an achievement gap in Danbury. I mean, I'm sure who's familiar with the achievement gap, and this kind of illustrates the difference between low-income children and the other children in Danbury. So, really, I mean, we're focused on all children, but, you know, if you bring those other children up, you know, you not only improve your schools, you improve your housing values, you improve, you know, you end a cycle of poverty. It really, you know, it can, it can change children's lives, it can change a community, a community's life, because you can, you know, so it's really, it's really important to support those low-income children and make sure that they are on equal footing, as Jean said, with the other, other children in the community. So, and they're, like I said, they're finding out more and more that, you know, by grade three, age eight, kids aren't reading on goal by age eight, they're much more likely to drop out, and, you know, every dropout costs $260,000, so.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Question. First of all, I think it's great, absolutely wonderful work, it's so nice to see this kind of collaboration. A number of years ago, the United Way had community impact councils, and they had successful kids and strong families. They had one with Jack Fong that was all around medical needs, they had one with housing. Is this the future of that? Was that the beginning of this?
Well, you know, they still have, education is still one of their community impact areas, but they are focusing more and more strongly on early childhood. They definitely are. They're, they're seeing that that's where your best dollar investment is, is in the early years, so.
And there certainly is enough research to support all of that.
Sure.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much. If there's any more questions?
Thanks. I just wanted to note that we have brochures, and there's copies of the community report card here. Ask you to take a copy and to look at our website, not just businesses or government or foundations, our providers of our resources, but individuals can too. If you go to www.danburypromiseforchildren.org, you'll visit our website, and you'll also see an opportunity for a donate now button there as well. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Whoa, Bill.
Oh.
I should start dancing.
It doesn't go on, I'm sorry. Calm it down. Yeah. Good night, thank you.
Thanks for coming, guys. You're welcome, thank you. Okay, moving on to our action items.
That the Board of Education accept the January 2014 operating results analysis from the General Fund in accordance with 14-48.
Ted, somebody? Come on. Ted, come on.
Anybody?
Sorry. All in favor? Oh, any discussion?
Yeah, please. Hey, Joe, just, just for clarification, where, I mean, where ahead it occurred? I mean, our expenditure, we look good as far as the budget.
Yeah. Minus the batteries again. We're bi, we're
Wrong phrase, okay.
Yeah, no, we're, we're on good, we're tracking
Correct.
fairly well right now. I mean, there's, like I said, and you know, there's a few open positions. Only concern right now, really, is some of the natural gas and heating bills, because obviously, like, just like everyone else's house, we're, we've seen an increase in natural gas. We're on a floating contract right now, so we've seen an uptick there. We won't really see that till we kind of get to the end. Right now, we've seen some increases, but, you know, we're seeing some savings in health insurance continue on trend there, so, all in all, we're, we're okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions? Passes?
That the Board of Education accept the January 2014 operating results analysis from grants and projects in accordance with 14-49.
Second. All in favor? Any discussion? Sorry. Karen, Steve, no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay. All right, we're going right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Enter places. Last, at the last board meeting, I, we talked about the strategic goal-setting activities we wanted to do last year or last four weeks. We had a retreat and established your, the board goals and mission, and we wanted to operationalize that, and we thought it'd be best to wait until it was reorganized, and we have been. And we've met with the consultant, and I'm really pleased with what we've come out with. Jonathan Costa had done some work for us with the administrators in this design work of coherence. It's a way of just saying, simply saying that we want to make sure everybody knows what's going on in the district, and we want to make sure that there's interrelationship between all the work that we do, so that we're doing it focused with, we're focusing on student achievement. Your goal, number one, was dealing with student achievement, and we have, we have plans. You know, the Alliance money that we're using has been your strategy, our strategy for that. There are many other things that have come up now with teacher evaluation. All of these activities seem disparate, and yet, they are focusing on student achievement. It was time for us to put it together, and this in front of you here is a, I'm not going to go through it all, but we had this put together for you. Take some time and look at it. What I wanted you to notice, however, was that there is, there are some dates here that I'm going to ask you to participate with, if you can. The board at the last meeting, the way this will work, there's going to be focus groups, but it's going to be really cut into a very thin slice. It's not going to look at the aggregate, it's going to look at a thin slice of student achievement. Take your goal and bring it together. And if you look at the first, the first page, the co-chairs, the two of us, will be working on it. Then we have central office, principals, teachers, parents, and union reps. We have, we took advantage of the councils at the secondary and elementary schools, as part of the reform movement. We have teachers of the years, we have other folks representing the teachers throughout the district. We would have asked for more, but we want to stay between 23 and 26 to make it productive. Invitations have gone out to everyone to see if they'll accept. If you turn the page, here is the actual process that we'll be going, going through, that he'll be taking. It's called Instructional Coherence Planning. And the second page, this page here, page here, there are some dates to be mindful of. We have board, someone help me out, there should be a board Wednesday evening program, and that'll be your workshop. So, the board will have its own time with the consultant to go through and do your prioritizing. and do your prioritizing and your listing of things that we deem are important. So the dates that we chose for those.
April 7.
April 7.
Second.
Second, is that, oh yeah, I'm sorry, didn't see, okay, she put on second. Okay, the, the second will be a night of actual working, and I'd like to have, we could have food here and we could get started. We have these 90 minutes for a purpose. Everyone will be working through a 90-minute block, so we'll, we'll start it at 6:30, we'll go through the, the process that the groups will be going through, Jonathan will be doing with all the focus groups. This, this central group will be looking at it, uh, aggregately, putting it together. At some point in time, which for you would be June 4th as a workshop night, they'll bring to you the information of the GAD and recommendations. Then we have two board meetings in June to work with it, uh, okay? It would have been great, it just didn't work out for us, to have those goals articulated before the principals left, because if you turn around for a second, that's been up there, I think the board goals, superenance goals, deputy superenance goal, all of it will be coherent, so it'll be in alignment. That'll focus on the teaching and learning elements in the district, and that's what we were hoping to get to. That'll fill the write-down into the classroom. Uh, and in this planning process will, will guide us for the next three to five years. So, the best we can do is by the June meeting, maybe the first one, if you're comfortable enough to have it accepted, then, uh, we can get it out to administrators and, and the teachers, and they'll be able to do alignment of goals for the upcoming year.
When you say the first one, that you'd like us to be ready for, which day are you talking about?
Well, the one that you're just going to be participants, is the, it would be the April 2nd.
Yes.
That's, you'll be participating in the activities.
So you would like us to, to have a meeting to determine our goals before April 2nd?
No, no, I'm sorry. April's, I'd like, I would like the project to be completed to you, so you can vote on it and accept it at the first meeting in June.
Oh.
That's what I mean. But this gives you two, one opportunity as a member, as every other focus group, then you will hear it in the workshop before the first board meeting in June, which would be June 4th. You'll have a workshop, we'll go over all of it, and then it will come on for action, it could come on effect, for the first meeting in June, for the board. Then if it's approved, then we can disseminate that stuff to everybody before they leave. If we get any more spoke days, it'll be July 1st.
Yeah.
You know, if that keeps going.
Okay, let's not talk about that.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that's the activities, and if you turn the pages, we've laid it out. Um, as to the focus, I mean, you know, it's got some neat designs, but the one that I particularly like is this one here that says easy to understand, hard to do, I'm sure. But that is looking at students as to what they're doing. What are we going to do here as adults, and what are we going to do organizationally in the district to augment that? And it goes to prioritizing those activities. The budget that Joe's building will align with this, so that we can really utilize the money in a purposeful way. The Alliance money is already going to this. Bill's building his, um, his, uh, his Alliance activities around this pattern. The next part of my agenda, and I'll just go into it now, it says Alliance update. We met with the State Department yesterday, and, uh, for privacy port and everything is moving ahead. We talked about this coherence pathways, are excited about that, because they can see the coherence of the activities that we're doing. So this all beginning, I love it when a plan comes together, it seems to be coming together. But, uh, these dates are tentative, if, if, if those dates don't work for you, if you can let me know now, I can kind of work with the consultant for those workshop dates, that is.
Well, for me, they're far enough ahead of time that I can schedule, anybody else have a problem with any of the dates?
What day, what day is it?
We try, Wednesdays, we try to deal with Wednesdays.
Okay.
They're Wednesdays off-board meeting nights, usually probably the first Wednesday of October.
It's the first Wednesday of, of April and the first Wednesday of June.
What we're doing, by the way, for the board, we're doing one of these nights with the PTO as well, we're doing it with all the groups as well. So, so anything to add here in the meeting today, Joe, Kim, I even brought Kim through this, so she can listen to it too. She was excited.
And Kim's probably told you how excited she was, was that?
Yeah.
I tested it.
I took her phone.
Oh, you did, oh, we got to share.
She went home to her husband, she said, "What'd you do today?" He said, "Nothing."
I said, "I can't explain it."
Just share, always share.
Joe, I guess I'd just add quick, my prior dish, we used Jonathan to work for our plan, it really worked out really well, kind of a similar model, so it went well for us. I think it worked very well here.
Very good.
Alliance, Bill, anything from yesterday? I thought it was, uh, we could have done it by phone, we had to go to Harvard, and we basically sat down and took that plan, and then Bill showed you, and we just went over the progress. They talked about, um, our next step, and the next step is develop the new plan, correct?
Right.
When does that do?
They give us a firm date, typically around May, typically around May.
They thought the turnaround time would be much quicker, right?
They, they're trying to reduce the paperwork load that goes with this. It's a large grant to write, as you know, most of you anyway, it takes about a month or two to write it, so this, hopefully, will be a little bit easier. It's nice, uh, on behalf of the board, because it was all thumbs up across, across all domains of the Alliance District, what they call track, we got green on every single cell, which is what you really want to get.
Do you think that says other, um, like, the board, some board members have talked to me and then I talked with Ivy, um, there's a gentleman, Ted Carroll, that has done some work with the board development work, leadership development work, and, um, we were, I was asked to contact him to see if he's interested to come back and do another workshop for the board, and to go over your operation stuff, uh, go over leadership stuff, and, uh, he would do it in a workshop format, again, the same thing, and we could do it, you could do it a Wednesday night, pick a night to do it. Uh, he is available, and, uh, will send me a proposal tomorrow about what the workshop would encompass, and I get it to you, and we can discuss. If you want to do it in the night, you might want to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right.
So, thank you very much. And, uh, okay, inside, if you go to the website, it communicates with parents how many days we've used, talks about the graduation date is set, the way you've been doing your calendar. Parents, I think, appreciate that, uh, knowing when graduation is. We use our five days that you built into the calendar, we also use three additional days, so we're making up eight days. Graduation, I believe, is on the 17th of June.
Oh, so, that's not bad.
Yeah, but we have to offer programs to everybody else for the next three days.
So lottery?
Yeah. The lottery, thank you. There were, um...
No one powerball?
Yes, not that lottery, right, we didn't win that one. But, uh, we, uh, Joe has the specific information, but I think there were, someone asked the question, how many, uh, how many folks applied for both, Ken, I think it was a hundred and sixty-six.
Hundred and sixty-six duplicate applications.
And then thirty-nine actually got into both?
Yeah.
Wow.
Thirty-nine, higher than I thought it would be, but, uh, so, um, invitations will be going out.
We had, uh, for STEM, sixth grade, we had 243 applicants, seventh grade, forty-six, and eighth grade, fifteen. For global studies, we had 215 applicants for just sixth grade. And as Dr. Sals said, we had 166 duplicate applications, and we had actually thirty-nine invited to both, who were willing to make the selection, so it's not there, I take a choice. And the split, just so we know, is a fifty-fifty split between Rogers Park and Broadview.
Yeah, so what's going to happen with the thirty-nine, they'll have to, they'll have to declare. Once they do, then who's ever on that, first on that waiting list, whichever side, will get in. So we'll have thirty-nine additional slots to put folks in. All right, so that's, that'll be going out, that's exciting. Um, anything else on the lottery we can answer? It went well, Joe, I think doing it, this on off-campus.
Yeah, the online application, with same as we do for our, um, AS Magnet School lottery.
Van Rose?
Did the letters go out as, um, sorry, did the letters go to the parents as to whether or not they were accepted into the UN academies?
I don't think they went out yet.
No, the letters, the letters are drying actually right in, uh, Dr. Glass's office right now, so they weren't actually thrown in the mail tomorrow. We've got, there's one last piece in the database, we have to mail merge everything together.
And, um, for the families that were accepted into both, do you have a very early or specific deadline for them to, um, make their choice, so that the parents who are on the waitlist can also make choices for their children? Like, how far is that, is there a delay?
We have a turnaround, I think it's about seven days where parents have to decide if they're going to, forget the doubles for a second, just, I applied all into STEM, I got into STEM, and, so we say, congratulations, your child was selected, but you have to confirm you want your child to go, and there's a relatively small window. At that same time, your child got into both, you have to declare to us which one you're going to take, and then automatically frees up the other slot, and that goes right back to the waitlist, and the number one person slides into that, and the same process kicks in again.
So everyone who decides that they're not coming, whether they've gotten both or one, those will go in along with the ones that declare from the thirty-nine. So another one letter will go home to all those that are on the waiting list to get in.
Correct.
So it goes out at the same time.
Okay, and then I have one more question, sorry. Um, for the, the thirty-nine, for the people who, for whomever applied, when you have a waitlist, just clarification, that child on the waitlist could possibly be, um, from Rogers Park, but the child that declined was from Broadview, so do you have a Broadview and Rogers Park web waitlist of, you know, one, two, three, four, five, so that you continue with your fifty-fifty percent in the, in the academy?
We just...
Yeah, yes, we do, same, same as, yeah, just like Magnet School, because you have all, all different lotteries for each, so you have two separate buckets of here.
Just to make sure that we have parent details.
Any other questions?
We have one more then.
Go ahead.
B, Connecticut Council of Education Reform, that was a group that was in today, and, uh, we had, um, part of the Alliance Grant, we, we have access to, um, different consultants in the state. This group came in about a month ago, they started interview with, it's in February, I mentioned it to you in December, to do an assessment of our data, our data analysis system, data processing. They did initial, and they were in today to talk with us, uh, gave us a presentation, it was about a two-hour presentation. Um, I'm going to rep, I'm going to reproduce that presentation for you. I think you're going to find extremely interesting, uh, what, what we uncovered. Um, they've been working with a number of districts, everyone's similar size, number of students, everything is, uh, right in our own, our dirt, our education reference group, so it's relevant data for us to have. They have another step to go, they're going to go out and do some more collecting of information. They made, uh, they corrected some of the stuff that they had, but when they're done with it, it, I'll, I'll have it as a presentation here, uh, they're, they did, they did a wonderful job for us.
Excellent.
Excellent job, and they really mapped out some, um, some best practices that we need to go down, uh, some, um, areas that we have some overlap, and some things that we can access resource-wise that maybe will help us. So it was really well done for us. I think it gave us a good handle, a good start on data processing needs here. Joe, I need you, Val, with anything to say?
The one piece I'd add to it is, you'll be, I think, shocked in some cases to see where we are funding-wise, and when you look at the other districts that are like Danbury, there's virtually no comparison, and yet, we're scoring at the top of our district reference group. So the work that's being done by our teachers and administrators is, and the board, obviously, is second to none, and so it's, it's just, it's counterintuitive when you, as Sal said, when you see the funding gap in districts like ours, it just kind of boggles your mind. It's going to be very illuminating.
Well, I did an academic review, which was, I, I felt unbiased, that, that's why I thought it was good, so, we'll be doing it. Thank you.
More to the information, food averages?
Um, just to follow up, there was an article in the paper, I think it was well done, uh, for the board's information, you know, we had the committee meet, policy committee, there was some ideas at the policy committee, one was a, a letter, and we continued, Kathy put together, it's a district, and we let it out, and the current policy that goes out, that, that, I think we'll put it in there for you. But, um, just for your information, we met with the principals, and we talked through, Kathy did a presentation to them abbreviated, uh, than what she did here, and, um, uh, we, we'll go into the PTO, I think, next week, first Monday, Monday, and we'll be doing a presentation, and, uh, we went through, uh, went through the recommendations, and, um, I think, at the end, when I report back, um, I, I think all of us want, would like to continue celebrating a youngster, and there are other options other than food, but there is an option with food. One of the ideas that was put out to them was the idea about, don't kids bring snacks, and can they use that? And that was, that seemed to go over, I thought, well, uh, if everybody brings their own, then they can celebrate, and if you want to have a puzzle, you want to have extra time. Everybody was very comfortable with that. No one's comfortable with reading, um, the ingredients and making decisions. They, that's a bad idea, and now the state's almost saying you can't do that. So it was a good meeting with the principals. Uh, we spent about probably half hour talking, about forty-five minutes, and I'll talk with the PTO on Monday night, a presentation, let you know how that goes.
All right, um, the regional...
Regional calendar, I put that in there. Um, I had proposed to them, they should do a two-year calendar, not a one, because we're all doing, so, we're meeting this Friday to look at next year. As you could see, what they did, there's little variances with ours this year, because this year is basically a volunteer. They're starting, um, I think, uh, a little later than we are with our kids, as you can see, we moved ours to Monday. Uh, that was basically the difference, and so on Friday, they'll be looking at the calendar from a year from this September. That is the one that we have to follow, so we'll be bringing that back to. I'd like to publish that early for parents so they can plan, so hopefully, if they get that done, we can bring it to you, and you can bless it and do that, uh, and then we can move on. Educated Evaluation, 13, let's see, let's see. Bill, this is the, this is the notice you might want to...
We want to bring this to the board's attention. It's a little bit tricky, uh, we're trying to keep it jargon-free and brief. Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Tavishak are serving on a teacher evaluation task force, it's a large group, about thirty people. Um, as the board members know, especially the veteran members, the teacher evaluation program in Canada has been a, a moving target, and we're trying to get our arms wrapped around it. If you look at, um, the exhibit, uh, sorry, it's the last exhibit in your package, 14-52, there are two things we want to call your attention to. If you look about a quarter of the way down the first page, it says student growth goals and objectives. Um, there's an option now for this school year, if you enter this school year, to reduce, at least it appears that it is a reduction, of going from one student, to two student growth goals down to one. And the burden that this has placed on everybody, and the teachers are really buckling under this, because it's all brand-new, and they have the Marzano training on top of it, and Danbury, obviously, is not the only district across the state, there have been the issues with all the pilots having so much difficulty, so the state is being responsive to the locals, 169 coming forward saying, this is somewhat problematic, it's not very problematic. So, one option that they've allowed us to submit, and we have to submit it by March 30th, is we can, instead of having two big goals, we can shrink down to one goal. Um, we see this being less important this year, and much more important for the future, because this will set the stage for a statewide argument, meaning positive in your intellectual argument, to say, this makes more sense, narrow the focus, and let us really target a particular area of need, as opposed to targeting many areas of need. More importantly than that, if you go down a little bit farther, you see the term observations, this is huge, this is a big one for us. Many of the folks who are on the teacher evaluation task force, we've repeatedly said to the board, our prediction is that this cannot be implemented, it's an impossibility. There's simply not enough evaluators to implement this model. 2001, Danbury went with a multi-year cycle, cyclical type of model, and so once every two, three, four years, you would be directly evaluated, in the alternative years, you would be on independent study, if you were deemed to be an effective educator. Um, what this does, it says the exact same thing, it takes us back to the year 2001. Teachers who receive and maintain the annual summit, meaning the end-of-the-year performance evaluation, designation of proficient or exemplary, will now need to be seen no less than once every three years, which is the old Danbury model. So we sat with the teacher evaluation task force, and we said, what do you think? The consensus of the group in it was, we try to go not for a simple majority, but for a supermajority, this was unanimous. A hundred percent of the folks on the task force said it makes sense for us to apply, because we're not sure yet whether we want to put somebody out for three years, we want to see them once every three years. We may want to see them once every two years. I'm just making this up right now. But there are subcommittees now that are going to be studying this, but if we don't submit this by March 30th, we don't have this option. So the TVal task force said we would like to submit this... So the TVAL task force said we would like to submit this, and it's a two-step process, one is, it has to be approved by your teacher evaluation task force, which it has been, and then secondly, the superintendent and the board chair have to sign off on this. We wanna do more than just give it to Ilyasal, we wanted to bring to the whole board total disclosure, and say, this is kind of the collective wisdom of the group right now. Again, this is a moving target, we expect this to change dramatically, every time we call up the state, they say, well, yes, those are great points, and we're hearing them from all the organizations. So the last example I can give you of this is, the deadline for submission of your plan, April thirtieth, we called up there, and they said, not so much. Now they're gonna open two windows, one of which will include April thirtieth, and another one which will include a different block of weeks or months, we're not sure. So we're just trying to roll with the punches on all this, and make sense out of this in terms of what's in the best interest of Danbury. Last thing I can share with you is, we keep getting kind of pats on the back from the state and others, saying, Danbury has been, quote, "very clever and very nimble" in the way it's maneuvered through this, and I think in large parts, because of this large task force that we have, that represents both unions, the leaderships in both unions is there, we have elementary, middle, high school practitioners, classroom people, we have central office and building-based administrators, and certainly we have board members. So it's very holistic, and it's very amicable, it's remarkably amicable, it's not what we're hearing from many other districts where the union is fighting administration, all that's not that at all, it's been a wonderful group with which to work. So with all that said, there is another piece that doesn't show up on this waiver, it simply says, a district must have in place a very robust teacher evaluation digital environment. And as you know, we've gone with Marzano and eye observation, it's been recognized as one of the best in the country, the state says, you guys are great, so we didn't bother bringing that up, because that's automatically in place already. So we're, just wanna share them with the board, that unless there's some objection, a hundred percent of the teacher evaluation task force members have said, we wanna recommend that we submit for this option for this school year, it's only good through June thirtieth, and we're expecting that the state will say, with so many districts coming forward, they're gonna say, we're gonna make this a permanent option, or we're gonna modify the entire state program to begin with as a result of the feedback that we're getting.
Any other questions, Amy Rose?
I should just not turn around. I get that, I should say. The question I had is, it seems as if we might be going back to the things that we've done in the past that have worked to evaluate teachers, so will we gain back, or is there a possibility now of gaining back those two professional days that we have in the calendar that I thought were, that's in the teacher's contract because of teacher's evaluation, which I assume because of the new teacher's evaluation? Is, will we be able to gain, get that back, because this wouldn't be new?
And I may have somewhat misled you, I apologize if that's the case. The Marzano framework is very complex, Michael's taken the P G A, and he quiz tonight on, that's big. The metrics, these student learning objectives for the elementary level are brand-new, they've never had them, we only did the secondary. Indicators of academic growth and development, I A G D is brand-new, and everything else that's been happening in the state has been constantly changing, so there's unanimity of thought across all fronts, that those teacher evaluation days will be very critical, that's time when we really have to help our folks come around this. Going forward, three, four, five, eight years from now, totally different ballgame, but for the foreseeable future, we think it's invaluable for us to be able to sit with our folks saying, let us teach you what an I A G D is, let us teach you what an S L O is, here's some examples, et cetera, et cetera.
Anybody else?
Just, I don't know how to phrase this. Because teaching has changed so much in the past years, now we're, now we're only going to evaluate the very best teachers that we say every three years, correct?
I appreciate you bringing that up. What this option, which was created by the state, says no less than once every three years. There's not a comfort level on the part of the teacher evaluation task force, that a lot of people are saying that's too far out, and so, and I don't wanna suggest that this is the deal, but it might be, they might, everybody might come together and say, let's do it every other year. Fifty percent of our faculty, year one, then year two, that first group is on independent study, and the other group gets strictly evaluated. If we were to go with a model like that, we would now have enough observers to actually operationalize it. If we go with every year, the way the state originally said, there's no way that anybody can do it.
About the first piece?
Yes.
Okay, being on the committee with Michael, and also...
Grab a microphone, would be good.
Using my email, in process, is, three, are three committees, from what I understand that we set up, dealing with some of the things that Anne Marie has been talking about, they think, you know, the three observations, one every three years, and the many, that's the four, but there is some process going on, meeting what you're saying, but I think maybe Bill would just maybe...
Yeah, thank you for bringing it up. When we sat with the task force, we were trying to keep the meetings to, not a minimum, but to a reasonable number. What came out of this, because this is, again, a moving target, it's moving so rapidly, that the team, and another indication of how strong it is, almost a hundred percent of the people have already volunteered to be on one of three committees. Committee number one is a time study committee, and so a teacher came forward and said, in order for me to upload these artifacts, it took me four hours, that's insane, is there a better way of doing it? So we have one subcommittee that will be looking at all things around time and efficiency. Second subcommittee is looking at the mechanics, such as, should be once every three years, should be once every two years, so that's the mechanical piece, and there's another part to this, again, I don't mean to get too technical, we do the final plan, we'll share with you the metrics, but certain domains are weighted differently, so the idea of direct teaching carries a lot of weight, sixty-eight percent. Another piece is professionalism, which is very important, obviously, but you can be very professional, and not necessarily be that good in the classroom, so that carries a lighter weighting. So there's a group looking at the mechanics, including the weighting and the values of this, and the third team, they're gonna do the work last, and it's a small group of people, and that's the team that rewrites the plan, based on what the two subcommittees come back with, and the unitary of thought. So this is only on for information, because the state doesn't require us to have an action item where the board approves it, but again, we've been so successful with sharing everything all the time with the board and with everybody else, I think that's part of why we're in such good, good shape. And this, again, ties into the Alliance District Grant, which was a big part of teacher evaluation, and they got a thumbs up. The work that Sal was talking about, the strategic plan, is all coming together around that coherence behind you, the board goals, superintendents, et cetera, et cetera. So we're, again, we're in very good shape with this, because I think we have a group, a bunch of really thoughtful people working hard behind, behind the scenes.
I see you, yes, please, Ralph. I was just checking with Anne Rose to make sure, or Anne Marie, I'm not quite sure.
Anne Marie, is it okay, my name?
You gotta make the red hat.
My second question, the first thing, because I still learn a lot of stuff, so first you said that it's not possible to do it once a year, and that's, right, is that, they wanted to do the evaluation each teacher once a year?
What the original plan called for, and they did this pilot in ten districts in Connecticut, and this is what failed miserably, each teacher would be evaluated formally, pre-observation, full period, pre-observation conference, Ralph, what are you planning on doing, well, we're going to be doing this today, then a thirty, forty, fifty-minute formal observation, and then a post-observation conference, well, Ralph, you said you were gonna do this, but in turn you did something else, I did because I thought my kids were here, in reality, they were over here, I had to go back and reteach. All really good stuff, but it's a lengthy process. Then, yeah, do that three times a year, and then three informals, which are much less work, labor-intensive, but when you take one teacher and six points of contact, and then you end up with thirty, forty teachers, the principals were saying, all I'll do every single day is go and do observations, and have pre-conferences, post-conferences, and that kind of thing, which is great, I just can't run my school. The state went, and for the veteran board members, you may remember, they changed, and they said, if you were deemed to be proficient, I mean, good teacher, you're proficient, or wonderful teacher, exemplary, last year's evaluation only has to be formally evaluated once a year. As they tried that, they found that was also problematic. So then this option of no less than once every three years, how does that sound, guys? That's really what they're saying, and we're saying, we're not so sure. For our conversation, I mean, the angst in Michael and Bob could, you know, definitely fill me in if I'm missing something, but the sense, my takeaway was, it might be too far out. Once every three years, even with a good teacher, because the feedback is so critical to helping even a good teacher get better, that we really wanna see that feedback, so the three minis will happen every year, and may, maybe, every other year, kind of modeled, and that will probably give us enough points of contact to allow us to continue to improve our practice without telling people, you can't do anything else other than teacher evaluation. If parent complaint, can't deal with it, student discipline problem, can't deal with it, cafeteria issue, can't deal with it, you've gotta go in and do your observations. That's where the, great question, that's where it all came from.
So you said three minis, or is that the informals?
Minis are called, informals are called walkthroughs, it could be a ten and fifteen-minute visit, so if you're my evaluator, I'm teaching you, walk in at nine o'clock and spend fifteen minutes, not fifteen, you're out, and then casually, not a written thing, but casually, you turn around and say, so here's what I saw, Bill, and it's strong, you might wanna think about working on this, and Gladys is our job-invented coach, she can come in and coach you to help you get better in this area. Very powerful stuff, and that's really working very well for us.
Real thanks, Ralph, is the, when you, when we removed, the state permitted us to remove the testings to teacher evaluation, and we're working, of course, if something's happened in New York and other states, trying to really get them to back off of that piece, because what Bill's talking about with the administrators, the training has brought everybody to a different level, and we think that conversation is so much richer than any data that you're gonna get from any testing, not that it's not important, but the formative stuff they do every day, the assessment data is more important than the stuff you take at the end, so the state's trying to move, and we're trying to push the state, not only to back off on the observation numbers, but really seriously look at the potential damage of using the student data, so hopefully there'll be some changing. What you don't see here is the record-keeping, what's really driving the teachers against the law is the record-keeping, the things that have to be done, because everybody's so careful that they're being rated on it, and things are being put up, people spending, Bill knows, he read something today, two, three hours, put it in, they'll go to the computer, turn it on, and you know the computer, it took it away. Sounds terrible, but think about a person doing mess of plans and that, so all of this stuff is building up, so the observation is one piece, next piece is to work on, do you really wanna use this kind of test data on teachers, and build on the good stuff that you're doing, and then use that for teacher evaluation, so that's what we're working towards, this is just permitting us to do it. We threw the anchor in, thinking that they would have some, they did do some switching, and the State Department, to their credit, has been listening somewhat, because they've been changing right along this year, which is a good thing.
Well, we're not the only ones yelling, too, you know, so...
We're gonna yell hard and louder.
Does anybody else have any more, any questions, Anne? All righty, I'm gonna move to discussion that I forgot to have, just turn the page, you forgot to have, it's on the ad hoc committee that we formed, which acted quickly, did everything it was supposed to do, I was just totally amazed, thank you so very, very much. Okay, so, in case you didn't read the, if nobody read what the decision was, they're recommending Westside Middle School Academy, is that correct?
Okay, and I have to thank Dr. Labanka for attending our meeting and working with us, thank you very much.
Did you bring the T-shirts? What color is that? So in terms of the discussion, just some feedback from my side, the team really discussed what they were interested in in terms of name, location base, and my feeling in the conversation was that it was important to recommend that this was a middle school environment, and that was not captured in the previous name, and, and then there was discussion about the word academy, and the word academy can have an elitist feel to it, but in educational circles, academy is really being used to represent smaller learning communities, and that's, and that the team really viewed as an important component, as well as to present the idea that we are really focusing on that small learning place for children, so that's the nature of the name, and then the residents really focused on...
And the kids have a part of it, what's the kids' part?
Oh, and then the follow-up was, the board felt it important that they make the decision based on the name, and so we decided the kids would have the option to determine school colors and also school mascot.
Excellent.
So there's the play between the students and, as well, so they would have a part in the process.
The only thing I can tell you, whoever wins gets a free ice cream party at home.
Oh, I see, at your home, I'm sorry, it wasn't moving ahead, it's not just my arm that's affected, it's my brain that's affected. Yes, okay, well, I love it, do we have any discussion on it? Oh, go.
Yeah.
Go!
No, that was it.
That was it.
I appreciate everybody giving their time and making it, we only had a couple of weeks to make sure that this got done, so thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm gonna take the I-know-it, I knew, I'm not even looking at you. So I'm literally not looking to my left, if everybody's wondering why, I'm just gonna say what I need to say for a change. I like it, I like Westside Middle School Academy, and thank you, Doctor, for explaining that to us, I had an explanation by one of the other doctors this evening, is today, why the academy was important, and I want everyone to call to remember that we have an academy existing already in our high school, that's a school within a school, it's our freshman academy, and, okay, go Kathy.
Nothing, I just wanted to say thank you very much for, including middle school, because that's what it is, it is our middle school, our third middle school, and the academy, I understand that it's a smaller learning environment, and I think it's up to us as a board to make sure that we say that over and over and over again, so that the public understands that it is not a, an elite school, but it is simply our third middle school, smaller learning environment, thank you. But thank you, that was great.
Kathy and I spoke on the way over, it's the virtue of letting each other...
We did, we did.
Is there a motion?
We made a motion.
We can, I mean, I can't imagine that we can make a motion. We can, all right, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add this.
Well, we made a motion to add an action item.
Oh, okay.
First.
I make a motion that we add an action item to the agenda.
Seconded by?
Second?
Anne Rose. All those, thank you, Sal, all those in favor?
Okay.
Now you need a motion?
Now the motion.
Now I need a motion?
I make a motion that we name the new middle school, the Westside Middle School Academy.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Because there is no more discussion, right, I have to park, oh, thank God, okay, seconded by Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Objections, abscesses, tensions?
Wait.
Oh, oh, Jesus, I'm sorry, yes.
Objections.
Oh, that was your objection?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you wanna elaborate on your objection?
Simply because, you know, I, I really understand it with the captain, middle school, I have the disconnect with Millridge, I, I really don't think personally, since I've been on the board, and I'm gonna just hear my feeling, that's not, that should not be one of the board's functions. We have a superintendent, and we have a new gentleman that's going to be the principal over there, and I think the recommendation should have came from here. I'm just not comfortable with that name, and I'm not gonna support it.
Okay, that's good, thank you, Bill, thank you, but, and to, to conquer your, just your concern...
It was no concern, it was my feeling.
We named, we didn't name it, but we were responsible for the naming of, we did what happened here for Ellsworth also, and we didn't, if we didn't go with Robert Tavany, we made a...
No, I can tell you how Ellsworth got named, and I can tell you how the language group got named, but that's not something that I'm gonna add here, I just, you asked for the vote, I shared my vote, I gave my comment.
And thank you, I thank you, okay, seriously, thank you. All right, we're going to go to, oh, my report, okay, my report consists of, you're very important, then one of four, okay, last meeting, Anne Rose, asked for the school governance council meeting in States and Times, I have them here, if you all tell me which school you're rep in, I will tell you what the date is, or do you want me just to just kind of list them? Just give us, sure. South Street, which is my school, the council has not formed yet. Ellsworth Avenue, the council has not formed yet. Hember, the second Thursday of the month at 6:30 PM.
6:30?
6:30 PM, second Thursday of the month. Stadley Ruff, first Tuesday of the month at 6:30 PM. Rogers Park Middle School, the first Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM. Danbury High School, the third Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM. I feel like the movie people. The Alternative Center, this applies to me, March, oh, they have dates, March 20th, April 24th, May 15th, June to be determined. I'm sorry? Phyllis has a question.
She does.
Because I have, I'm obviously, why it also messes up.
If my school wasn't red, it means it does not need one.
Does not have one.
Does not have one.
Does it mean it doesn't need one?
Well, they're not, they're not required to have one, that's gross.
Yes, thank you. So, you're free, yes Bob?
Just a question, if you are not assigned to the school, but just like, would like to find out how these things can work, can you go?
Yes, you may.
Because you know how the courses and the volumes.
It's a privilege of being, being on the Board of Education, right?
Okay.
And that's one of our many privileges.
Okay.
Just to remind everyone.
Let someone know your.
Let them know, the other thing is, in statute, they are advisory to the principal. You need to remember that, that is key. So, you know, you need to know your roles when you get there. So, you know, somebody starts talking, I understand that it's not really to come here, because that, that was part of the legislature, that was argued out and that was litigated. There needs to be their advisory to principal, they have a role of selection of principal, administrators, they advise the principal and, they do all that stuff. And that'll come through us sometimes with the principal. But when you go there, just understand who's the role. But you're always welcome to go to those, and it's nice that you do go.
Go and observe.
Yeah, it's, it's nice that you go and listen, because that shows that you care. And I appreciate you making the effort.
Okay, any other questions?
Are you staying on schools that work?
You know, I'll make a copy.
Okay. There were two, right?
Yes, now especially.
You make a copy, then you get it.
Yes, of course, I've written personal notes all over it, so I'm welcome. Okay. Alrighty, everyone will get a copy, so we don't have to write everything down. Okay, next. Next, while I'm on this, I sent, just sent Kathy, I was contacted by a woman who specializes in, in food allergies, and she's helped write policy in a variety of different districts. And so she contacted me as the board chair to, for us to avail of our service. I believe it's a paid service, because I went to her website, and this is her business. But Kathy now has the information, for those of you that are on that policy committee, to contact we to, to find out.
So, cool.
Yes.
On that, and I'm not gonna bring, now I'm saying, we're gonna do a forum or something on that, right? I think we were talking about?
A forum?
There's two things going on.
Okay.
We have the BTO, and the principals, and then on March?
29th.
29th is Parent University, that's the forum.
Okay, that's for parents, I know a couple people have asked me.
That's, that's for parents.
To go there to?
Yeah, that's Parent University.
Hear their concern or whatever.
They'll be hearing the presentation on, on the rationale, if they, they should go to that. And then, when the board adopts this policy, they, they'll discuss it at the board meeting, then, they'll adopt something, they have to modify it because the law has changed. So they'll have to do something, but, once the board does it, the first night, there's the first reading and second reading, it goes out to the public for comment, then they come here and comment. That's what, and then the board takes those comments when they, when they adopt it sometime, or not.
Okay, cool, thank you.
On that topic, on the topic I wanted to bring up, I have my notes of the 29th of March.
Parent University.
And, is this what you just?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ann.
Alright, and, so let's all try to attend. Alrighty, next, where was I, oh, alright, let's do our board reports. Yes. Mr. Furster, go.
Just an update from the SABC. That they are participating in Fairfield County Giving Day, which is next Friday, March 7. I believe an email was sent out that maybe you guys have seen. Basically what this is, it's a Fairfield County Community Foundation, Bank of America and others will be awarding prizes and matching donations to local nonprofits for 24 hours only. And DSABC is part of this. So they have different prizes that they're offering for these groups, from the most, the biggest, the group that gets the most donations, or from the most people, there's different categories and stuff. So, it starts at midnight next Friday, the 7, and continues till 11:59. If you go to FCGibs.org, and then you just search DSABC in the list of organizations, you can give anywhere from $10 up, that's it. Just pass along.
That was your, that's fine, Michael, anybody else, any other committee have a report? Finance, everybody's happy?
Just waiting to hear from Mark.
Okay. So is everybody else in City Hall, I guess, okay, it's like, I've never seen such hysteria.
Yes.
Anybody else? Kathy, you have anything? Nothing?
No, not at this time, no.
Okay. And, okay, Monday, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Glass, he would notice better than anybody else, if you could just take a second. Is Monday Dr. Seuss's birthday?
Oh, no, I sh-
March 2nd is.
March 2nd is, are we celebrating it Monday?
I'm reading, I can't remember the days though, yeah, March 2nd?
March 2nd officially is, but most schools are doing it March 3rd, as it's Monday.
So, I would like to, I would like to know with a show of hands, who has time during that day to dedicate to go to our schools and read? For people that haven't been here before, it's one of the perks of being on the board there. Not only do you get nifty parking spaces, you also can go to schools and read. And, and to me, and maybe it's just me, it is the best thing I do all year, is walk in and read to small children. And it doesn't take a lot of time, everybody appreciates it, it puts you in your school. Try to, if you have time, we'll contact, we will contact the school that you rep, so that that's another introduction for you to be involved in those schools. We don't read on the high school level, for those of you that do the secondary schools, hopefully they know how to read by themselves by then, yes Phyllis?
It's been a tradition for me to read in Park Alley, because my daughter teaches there, and I read in her classroom for the last five years, I think. So, I won't, I don't know about Hayestown, that's my school, so I will talk to that principal a lot. I don't know if I can do both schools in the same day.
Alright, all I'm asking, all I'm asking, and I'm not even, and I am asking, is if everybody could just participate, just, it doesn't take long, it, it doesn't take any time at all, it's getting there, parking, going in and reading, it takes the most time. And it's maybe a couple of hours during the course of the day, but I do two weekly schools, so it, that's why it takes me that long to do it. And those of us that can't during the day, I'm sorry you miss it, but it's fun. Do you have people come to your school?
Mm-hmm.
You do?
I have board members come to my classroom, yes.
You do, okay, that's excellent. Alright, so I just want everybody to be aware of that, you, Bob, are you good?
Yeah, I'm just surprised, usually there's somebody here from the union, or telling us what you're telling us.
Right.
Oh, alright, or from the group, okay, but that's, I'm not very, I'm not very.
We haven't got anything so far.
But in the past.
It's Monday coming.
That's a lot of people.
I didn't get one. Okay, good, well that's, I want everybody to do something, Michael?
Well, King Street I know did send out. I'm going to King Street, I mean, so. Are you?
So everybody has, good, but everybody's doing it.
Okay, it's very fast.
That's the travel, that's the travel.
Okay. What time?
And they earn money for the rest of us, thank you. Alrighty, the other thing, okay, here's a sensitive subject I'm just bringing up, and then I'm gonna wind it up and get out of here, because people are gonna be dirty looks up, what are you talking about? I'm running, I know the new comments, but just, hold on, but this is, this is. We have these, this is our, we all get our agendas online, alright. I don't wanna belabor the point, I'm just gonna go over it. I watched last week, when, or last new, to me it's just one moment, you guys, since the slim hangup. And what happens is I watch people talk about an issue that we're getting, moving on with, this Parent University, and I had come to a meeting before that, and I watched board members, because I'm in a place now where I can actually see everybody, not just the people directly across from me, without looking like I'm staring at them. And I watched people try to find it online, I saw people trying to quick read it while someone's speaking of it. And, and I personally, who thought she had read her agenda, okay, asked for a hard copy of it from Ann Marie. Who must have said, wanted to probably say to me, did you read your agenda, it's in there? Because imagine my surprise when I saw it on the electronic, here, while I was sitting here, while she was talking. So, I thought, if I had this, when I got this delivered, because years ago, not years ago, but five years ago, I don't know how long it's been, these were delivered to our house every week. And they were in your door when you got home from work, every Friday, you know, Friday before a meeting, from Howard Water. And I, I read it page by page, I was so diligent, because I read it whenever I had spare time, it sat on, on the kitchen table, so I read it all the time. And I understood everything, and I had questions, and I called and asked questions from finance, and, and that's how we learned to do that, that's how we originally did it back in the day. Which was only five years ago, so, but anyway. Now I've watched people trying to find things online, and I was doing the same thing. Now you have to know, when it was delivered to our houses, there were people that actually opened the manila envelope that it was delivered in, as they were walking through the door to a meeting. So, it's always been that not everybody's gonna read it all the way through. So I started to ask around to people, and I found out that there are people that already get a hard copy of it, so it wasn't gonna be a hardship for Debbie to make me a hard copy of it. So I said to her, I'm gonna ask everybody, or just tell you, I don't care who you are, I'm just telling anybody that wants a copy, Debbie said they're ready on Fridays. And she'll have them ready, all you have to do is call her, and she'll have it ready for you, just to run in and pick it up. You don't have to sit and spend five hours talking to anybody, you can just pick it up, and then you have all that time to actually read the hard copy and touch it. Not that you're gonna read it any better, maybe if some of us try to do that, we'll be a little bit better prepared. And then you have time ahead of time to ask your questions, or all these people that do all this work, that we now bother with. Okay, so it's a quarter to nine, I'm talking too much, I'm getting a book. And Kathy, I can hear her breathing next to me, and Richie, always looking over his glasses at me. So, it's time to move along. And just, anybody go to any schools or do anything that they wanna talk about? Yes, Phyllis?
I don't want to go on time, but I did.
No, no, you take the time, it's me talking that I'm not supposed to.
I did, go to Hayestown's PTO meeting, and I was very pleasantly surprised, because I was given a history that over the last, I don't know, several years, they had the same problem that we have parent participation. And they'd have a PTO meeting, and you know, five people would show up. Well, there were 30 people there.
Oh.
And I think the principal, it has made it her goal, and when I came in, she was outside with the buses, talking to the parents who were big. She made it obvious to parents that she wanted them there. Anyway, it was, I was very pleasantly surprised.
It is, that's good, I like that, well, anybody else have anything?
Just, I was, the Stadley Ruff and the Great Plains, one, they, they had a decent, decent turnout, which, Great Plains, as you guys might know, a PTO president there for seven years before. And we always had a decent, decent now, but you know when there's hot button issues or anything comes up. But, you're, you're right, the principal, like Ms. Smith from Great Plains would send out, you know, calls and even notices and stuff home, and you feel like, the more people are informed, the more people show up. And Stadley Ruff had a, had a nice, nice turnout also. And their principal was really, you know, they really seemed to work well, well together. So I'm gonna continue to go to as many as I can.
Well, I, I think that goes to the point of personal contact, you know, that relationship is, or trying to build relationships.
Anybody else, who doesn't know Ridge? Nobody? Oh, David.
I think David.
Oh, David, oh, right, okay, because I was quite a PTO president there for a hundred years. Okay.
Two quick things I just wanna throw out there.
Yes.
Just programs, Great Plains School, if the board members aren't hearing, we have some issues with the roof leaks up there. We've been monitoring it, we've got tarps and everything, so that comes out. And also, we walked Mill Ridge today to see if fries and construction, so they're coming along.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a lot of shells, a lot of concrete, but it's getting there. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be on time, no, so we're telling, it's a good.
It's kind of exciting.
Yeah, it is, oh, very neat.
I mean, it's pretty sad.
Right now we have the open classroom.
Yeah, yeah, actually, very.
Which is very true to Mill Ridge, you can read Mill Ridge, it was originally an open classroom.
That's what we got.
Okay.
Field of stories.
Alright, so that ends my, I believe that ends my thing. Oh, no, oh, yes, I did, I did a whole thing with that, so, okay. Go south. It's grievance time.
Grievance is off.
Oh.
So you go. But you do have one on, we've scheduled a special meeting for the beginning of your workshop next Wednesday, so there will be one at 7 o'clock next Wednesday, unless you wanna notice it for 6:30, I don't know when we did 6:30.
6:30.
So at 6:30 we should be done by 7:30.
Yeah, it's gotta start at 6:30, because of the workshop.
No, but that's fine.
So that should be the only.
Is that okay with everybody that, that we're doing that, because I just sort of hate that. I'm sorry?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, anybody else, if you've got nothing else for me? Except that we can go on? Is there a motion, should we turn on the light? Okay, if I'm not spaced out.
Thank you.
You're out of here, let's go. Thank you very much, everybody that's seen, thank you so much.
Sterling, so, how does, Sterling, yes, how does this work now? It's, how do we find it?
You go to the Danbury's homepage, you scroll down the bottom, there's a video.
You go to our website, right?
Yep, and you scroll to the bottom, there's a video, I can show you right now if you like.
Hey, everybody, listen, shush everybody, one more second, please. This is, it's, go to the website, and our meeting's on there, it's been running live through this whole thing. So please, it's.
So, next, next time I wanna be able to tell parents that they wanna go ahead and go on.
Yes, here's another news flash for everybody.